I also realize, I don't think I want to realize it. It's John's. School committee meeting as well. Look at that. You look younger already. How is that happening? It is your last full meeting, anyway. We do have a meeting, an executive session meeting tomorrow, but wow.
Yep.
Been through a lot of these.
It's been, yeah, eleven and a half years. So I'm very thankful to the taxpayers of Hingham for allowing me to work here. I think it's been a great time. The time has gone by fast. Eleven and a half years have gone by very, very fast. I think we did a lot of good stuff. I think the organization is in good shape. It's really intact. We got a new middle school. We got a field complex. We dealt with fire, flood, famine. You know, we've really hit the gym for a lot of things. And, you know, I really appreciate the people that I've worked with. You know, I have to say, you know, coming into central office every day, the people there, I just love them. I mean, they are the greatest people. And, you know, every day coming into work has been a joy. And then, you know, my leaders out there with Katie Hartman in facilities and Patrick at the buses, Patrick Cunningham, and Kim Smith at food service, and Jackie Sansone at Kids in Action. I mean, those are the people that get all the work done. And, you know, I'm just a support structure there for them. We talk, we strategize, we try to communicate, we try to put the essence of what the situations are out there and, you know, just bring them to the committee and, you know, keep on going forward. So I've always, I feel, you know, I've always looked for productive use of our money for the taxpayer of Hingham. I've been always, I live in town too, so I'm very happy that I've been the one controlling the dollars because I know that they've been spent well. And, you know, there'll be a lot of, there'll be a lot of missing too, you know, I mean, because the work has been really fun, very, very busy all the time. But, you know, you get to look back and you get to see all the progress that was made. And to me, that's very rewarding. And I do thank the school committees and the people of Hingham for allowing me to take this role on your behalf. Thank you.
I will certainly miss both of you. It is very nice tonight, though we do have two special, we have a lot of guests in the audience, but we also have two special guests. Our incoming superintendent, Dr. Margaret Adams, is here joining us. Thank you so much for being here, Margaret, and welcome to almost your official start time. A couple more days. And Ayesha Opang is here as well. She is the new Director of Business Services. So, Ayesha, thank you for being here and for coming back to the district to help fill in for, in John's footsteps and keep leading the district forward. We really appreciate it. How are we doing?
Relax.
Relax? Okay. All right. I'm glad that some of that got caught, if people were able to see that. All right, I've called to order, and our first Ray Estes promises this to be a quick, a relatively quick item on the agenda, to hear proprietary specifications for the Foster School project and act as appropriate. Ray, would you like to come on up to the microphone and fill the committee in? Thank you for being here.
Thank you, madam chairperson. Got to get used to saying the new words. Ray Estes, 92 Fort Hill Street, for the School Building Committee. Let me just first say briefly, Dr. Maestas, that it's been my great pleasure to get to know you and work with you over the past year, and I wish you well and thank you for coming in when we needed some help. And John, what can I say? Eleven years with you, and I still have your cellphone, and I know where you live in Brewster. Thank you for everything. It's been a great pleasure. So very briefly, as you know, the Foster School Project is going to be conducted as a public construction project. Public construction projects in Massachusetts require a certain procurement process. And part of that process is that if you want to specify any particular item by a particular manufacturer or a particular type, you have to have a formal approval process. Normally, if you think about an example, like if you were going to hire a contractor and put windows in your house, and you didn't specify a particular brand of windows, and the contractor just came up with a few different kinds, an Anderson, a Marvin, or, you know, Pella, right? But if you wanted to specify a particular window, like an Anderson 400 series, or if you lived in a historic district in town and you had to, you were required to install a particular window for a particular reason, then you might specify in your contract that the contractor had to provide and install four items that the School Building Committee and the design team working with us has identified as what we call proprietary specifications, which require formal approval. These are security and access-related items that we reviewed with the security team in town, facilities, police, fire, as well as the school facilities group. These are four items, including for access control, video management, public entrance, intercom systems, and door lock cylinders. These are essentially for two reasons. One, to provide consistency among the six schools in the district, and also to provide some consistency with public safety in town who use some of the same systems. So we felt that it was necessary. We identified those early in the process. The School Building Committee met last week, and on the 15th, we voted unanimously to approve these proprietary specifications. The MSBA likes to have an elected board do so, and as we did with the middle school 10 years ago, not only did the School Building Committee approve, but the school committee also took a vote and approved those specifications. So I'm here before you to ask for you to approve those proprietary items for inclusion for submission to the MSBA with our submission that's going in about, within the week.
Thank you very much for that explanation. The list of items and the rationale is also in the packet for the school committee. Any school committee members have any questions for Mr. Estes?
I have a question for Mr. Estes. I just want to quickly mention that we're getting a comment. It's hard to hear the mic, that specific mic.
Oh, the guest mic?
The guest mic.
Thank you. Thank you.
I've never been told I'm hard to hear.
I was gonna say, I've not been heard that much.
It's hard to hear Ray talk.
So no questions from anyone in the committee? All right, then I would accept a motion if someone is prepared to make one.
I will make a motion to approve the following proprietary items to be included in the Foster Elementary Project specifications to meet the district's operation and security needs: access control management system, video management system, exterior intercom system, and the hardware keying system.
Do the second. I will second. Fantastic. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, now for the main event, item number three, the strategic plan presentation. I will turn it over to Dr. Maestas.
Thank you, and welcome, everyone, tonight. I know we did some introductions here earlier, but I just want to start off tonight by reiterating that when I first decided to come on and support Hingham by being the interim superintendent, one of the key features that the school committee was very interested in is moving forward with a strategic plan. And, you know, as we began this presentation tonight, I want to highlight the 21 people that were part of this process. I will identify them at the end of the presentation. But a lot of effort went from this group to be able to present this. So when I speak tonight, I speak for the group. I am the interim superintendent. I acted on behalf of the committee, the school committee, and also the residents of Hingham to help just be a participant. So what you're going to hear tonight is the work of the committee, and it is through the facilitation of TLA, Teaching Learning Alliance. They were the facilitator consultant for this work, and Scott Borstel, and Ed Lee, and Anna Nolan. Those three consultants were really the key players in helping us to ferret down exactly what we're going to hear tonight. Keep in mind that Dr. Borstel was scheduled to be here tonight, and he called me at 8:00 a.m. this morning, and he sounded horrible. He has COVID, and he was planning on being here with us tonight. But I told him I got it covered. So hopefully, I am able to guide us through this process, answer a lot of questions. But I'll go ahead and begin that process now. So one of the things that I want everyone to reflect on is, in Hingham, there was a strategic plan that was built from 2016 to 2021. And it was the intent of the school district to build this plan and re-energize the strategic plan last year. But as a lot of other things that happened in education during last year, it got postponed. And that really got put on the agenda for this year. I came along, met with the school committee, and we came up with a plan of action to actually get this done. So here we are tonight, and we're grateful to have that done. And this plan is a three-year plan. Some districts do five-year plans. We thought it was important to introduce a three-year because there are so many things that can happen societally, technology, and, you know, other things that happen in education. We thought a three-year plan would be adequate. I will reference tonight a number of initiatives that will be moving forward. This plan represents about 25 initiatives that will move forward, but the Strategic Planning Committee had on their radar over 60 initiatives that are backup information that I will, that we will share with the school committee. And one thing that I want to make clear before we get into the strategic plan presentation in its entirety is, although the strategic plan is very key to moving the district along these key initiatives, but there are so many other things that happen in the school district alongside the strategic plan, things that we've been working on for forever, and curriculum development, all those things that, you know, PD, all the things that we normally look for. The strategic plan might add an added focus, but all those things still have to move forward. The superintendent's checklist that has so many initiatives that the state requires school districts to move forward with, those things happen too. The information that's in here are key tenants that the district is really going to energize and put effort towards, and we'll explain those tonight. So the biggest piece that we have is, you know, we had to look at a lot of historical data for the school district, and that is key elements to us building the plan. So Dr. LaBella was key in this aspect. He populated a folder full of data, you know, ranging from years back to, so we could actually take a look at the historical aspects of Hingham. And it was a great deal of work and a great deal of information to look at. We had the opportunity of selecting a strategic planning committee. We had 21 members that came together to help us with this work. We also had six focus groups that we had around the community that were really stakeholders of the community, that would actually help us to narrow our focus, but yet include information from these key stakeholder groups. We did a survey that went out to the community. We had 400, a little bit over 400 responses and comments from students, staff, families in the community. And we had six three-hour evening meetings with our 21-member committee to be able to look at this information and develop this plan. So as I say this, I want you all to realize and just kind of understand that we did this, the administrators on this team and even the school committee members on this team were participants. We didn't run it. We didn't facilitate. We were just like everyone else. We provided information when we felt it was appropriate, and we didn't shape it, we helped to shape it. It was a collaborative process. So during this winter and the spring, members of this group came together, and we really worked on this roadmap for the district, and it was developed in a three-phase model. So it's not easy to see this projection unit, but I'll describe it to my best, to the best of my abilities. It was a three-phase process. The first phase was build the foundation, and the foundation is really understanding all of the data and all of the conditions that make up the Hingham Public Schools, from preschool all the way to high school and beyond. And we wanted to really collect all this information, digest it, and that information through focus groups, data, and, you know, these surveys and information we collected, helped us to begin to build the plan. And that's phase two, is building it, which was cumbersome because there are so many desirable initiatives that this community would like to see happen. We took a great deal of information, and I want to give the parent community and the teacher community, student community, a great deal of congratulations and thanks. The information that they provided in the surveys was extremely comprehensive and very detailed. So when we broke that apart, we were able to actually pull a lot of pieces out of it that helped us to incorporate into this plan. And then phase three is really looking at the implementation of the plan. And that is what we, that the school district will do moving forward, is the implementation. And the strategic plan in itself has a timeline of when different initiatives will happen. So we won't talk about that tonight, but if you look at the strategic plan in its entirety, it'll have benchmarks of when these initiatives will actually start to roll out. One of the things that we were really careful in this process is not overloading and not trying to do too much too soon. I'm very concerned that, you know, we have new administration in the district, we have a new superintendent that is, she's a worker bee, you know? That's what Margaret is. And Margaret will probably try to do more than what we have phased, but one of the things that we wanted to do is make sure that we parse the development of some of these pieces throughout time. The timing is in the strategic plan document in itself. I won't review that tonight, but one of the things that's very exciting to us is, and again, we, this is completely collaborative. This isn't the interim superintendent coming with these great words or great themes to put on paper. This is the new mission statement that we're recommending moving forward, and the mission statement reads, "Together with students, staff, families, and community, we cultivate an equitable, inclusive, innovative learning environment that empowers all students to contribute to their local and global community." Now, keep in mind, we went over this for a couple of hours, maybe longer, to try to shape it and craft it. We put it up for everyone to look at. We thought we had agreement, came back the next meeting, we still had to shape it. But this is a collective mission statement that was brought forward to the school committee tonight by our team. The next, oh boy, I was afraid of this. My laptop is freaking out. Well, you know what? It's hard to read anyway. So is it all right if I just read from the handouts? I mean, I can try to reset that, but it looks like my computer just shut down. I can try to restart it. All right. Well, you know what we'll do is, people can ask questions through Facebook, so that would help.
Slides have to go. Where are they showing the slides from?
They weren't.
Oh, they weren't?
Oh, okay.
All right, so let's move on to the core values. Just so everyone in the audience knows, I had a presentation on the projection unit here at 220 Central, and it's kind of bright in this room, so it's a little difficult to see. And then my computer PowerPoint just shut down and quit, so that's what I get, I guess. So anyway, the next slide is relative to the core values. And this, the core values, again, it's one of those pieces that the team put together. The core values are as follows. The Hingham Public Schools' core values should remain constant in an ever-changing world. These values provide the foundation of our work and influence how we conduct ourselves and engage with others. The following set of core values was established, and these core values were established by our team. Inclusivity and belonging, not in any priority order, okay? Inclusivity and belonging, community well-being, lifelong learning, student-centered, personal excellence, innovative learning, civic and global responsibility. And these are the core values that we hammered down for quite some time, and we were able to settle on these core values for the district. So our mission statement, you heard that, we get into our core values. The next piece is going to be our vision statement. The vision statement reads, proposed vision statement reads, "All students will embark on a lifelong journey to flourish with empathy and confidence." So when you consider the mission statement, the core values, and the vision statement, one thing that we were cognizant in developing this, these themes, is that we wanted the population of stakeholders in Hingham to actually remember these, so they wouldn't be so cumbersome that you couldn't recite them, so that if you saw it in a school, on a wall, in a handbook, that you'd be able to remember what they are and how it connects to you. So that was one of the things that we were really concerned about, is that we wanted something that was relatable, relevant, and you could actually remember it, you know? It was important to us. The next piece is a theory of action. And those of you that are familiar with theories of action, this is a number of really key words that identify the theory of action of this strategic plan. And I'll read it. "Through effective collaboration, two-way communication to ensure an inclusive culture and a sense of belonging, aligned, high-quality pre-K through 12 curriculum, innovative research-based practices, data-informed instruction, and strong leadership, equitable and inclusive environments, funding to provide effective, safe, and modern facilities, and a system of resources and support to ensure consistency in leadership and a diverse staff that reflects the student. We will cultivate an equitable, inclusive, innovative learning environment that empowers all students to contribute to the local and global community." So that is the theory of action as an entirety for the strategic plan. So that's, again, our consultants helped us to actually narrow that down and provide a really inclusive theory of action. So let's get into our strategic objectives. We are considering, as we develop the strategic plan on a presented, for lack of a better word, presentable format, we're going to take the plan that you see here tonight, and TLA, the consultant, send it to a desktop publisher, and we're thinking that the spokes that we recite tonight will be spokes on a captain's wheel, and that will actually be the overarching kind of graphic. So when you take a look at the PowerPoint tonight, you'll notice that there's a captain's wheel on all of these slides that actually demonstrate that those are the key, the keys to the hub of this wheel. So the first spoke on our strategic objective is culture of collaboration and community. And the strategic objective is create partnerships between home, school, and community through effective two-way communications, excuse me, communication to ensure an inclusive culture and a sense of belonging. So that's the objective, the overarching objective. We developed initiatives that actually support that objective. So each one of the five spokes that we'll talk about tonight have a strategic objective, and we'll have a number of initiatives that the district will engage in over the next three years to actually help meet this objective. So those strategic initiatives are as follows. Strategic initiative one, develop a district-wide communication, community engagement plan, including home-school partnerships to support teaching and learning, protocol chain of command and model for two-way communication, website enhancements for communication purposes, consistent format from school district and district newsletters. That's the first strategic initiative. The second one is align procedures for the recent updated policy manual. We have an updated policy manual, and we are in the process, and the district will continue to look at how they update the procedures to support that policy manual, and that will be forthcoming work. Strategic initiative three, align district documents to reflect strategic initiatives and common district-wide practices. So how do we take a look at all the documents that are in place today, and how do we ensure that they match what's in this document? Okay? Strategic initiative number four, improve communications between home and school during critical transition years, preschool to kindergarten, grade five to grade six, and grade eight to grade nine. We heard from parents across the board through some of our focus groups and surveys that those transition periods of time are somewhat stressful for kids and families, and more communication about that process and how that works would be much appreciated. So that's the first spoke of this initiative. The second spoke, and this is the strategic initiative two, ensure student success through aligned, high-quality, pre-K through 12 curriculum, innovative research practices, and data-informed instruction. So the first initiative is develop innovative pathways to enhance student learning. The second one is, actually, this is bullets underneath the first initiative, develop early identification and innovation strategies to identify at-risk students and develop innovative pathways for students' academic intervention and support. The next one is revise the middle and high school schedules. We heard from parents about the high school and middle school schedules. We also heard that from staff, about how cumbersome it was and how it's been the same for quite some time. The next one is develop common master schedules across all elementary schools. It's information that was brought to the district relative to the schedules being different at every elementary, and how can there be some level of attention to that? Provide equitable access to upper-level academic courses and AP classes. So how do we provide equitable opportunities for students if they choose to be part of upper-level academic courses? How can that happen? Same thing for AP classes. How can that structure be modified and developed so that students can have equitable access to those courses? And that's one thing that we heard from parents loud and clear, and students as well. Strategic initiative two, explore and implement research-based initiatives, excuse me, research-based innovative instructional practices. Implement a universal design-for-learning model, provide student professional development, and support universal design-for-learning practices in classroom settings. The next bullet is enhance the use of data to inform teaching and learning. The next bullet under initiative two is develop and implement common elementary math assessments. The next strategic initiative under two is explore and implement research-based innovative instructional practices. Implement universal design for learning.
I think that's the same. I think those are the same.
Oh, they are. Why did it say the same?
I think it was yes.
Okay.
So I think number three is on the next page.
All right. Sorry, everyone. That is working at this late at night. Sorry, everyone. And strategic initiative three, under spoke two, is engage in a district-wide process to create a portrait of the graduate, pre-K through 12. The portrait of the graduate is the work that really takes a look at where you want all students to be from pre-K through 12, and it's all students, not just a few students. Sometimes this is called the vision of the graduate, but this is really a portrait of the graduate, and what do we really want our kids to be able to think, see, and do? And that's something that is, right now, is part of the New England Association of Schools and Colleges process for the high school, but it is really a great opportunity to do that from a pre-K through 12 model. Strategic initiative four, identify and implement a new elementary reading program. And strategic initiative five, under spoke two, is fully fund and engage in a multi-year curriculum review and adoption cycle process. So one of the things that we talked about was how do we put on a calendar a multi-year curriculum review process that you don't have to fund every initiative every year? It's cycled so that you can actually expect when each program will get a curriculum adoption, and perhaps textbooks that may go with that. It's very expensive to fund curriculum adoptions, and it's great to have a funding cycle and a review cycle that will actually set the pace for the future. It's pretty exciting to engage in. Spoke three, this is strategic initiative spoke three, and this is healthy, equitable, and inclusive communities. And this strategic objective is cultivate an equitable and inclusive environments that promote a sense of belonging to allow for social, emotional, physical, and academic wellness. The strategic initiatives for spoke The strategic, strategic initiatives for spoke three are, the first one will be to establish a system of support to respond to socially-emotional needs of all, fully develop a socially-emotional program at the middle and high school level. Our, our programs are in play now, but they are, are just beginning. And I think what we're talking about here is really allowing these programs to really reach their potential. The next one is address post-COVID sense of trauma. We've noticed that we have a number of our students in our school district that are experiencing the effects of COVID. And that is another spoke of, for lack of a better word, spoke of our socially-emotional model in the district. How do we help students deal with some of the issues that they are discovering after trauma, excuse me, after COVID, which has really resulted in trauma? Explore a restorative justice approach to discipline. We actually, in Hingham, have introduced restorative justice, justice modeling this year, and it will continue. But again, it's that repetitive practice and explaining and communicating it to all stakeholders in the district, and that's one thing that, that we'll continue to do. Implement an initiative to support staff well-being. That's one of the things that our staff really highlighted to us is, you know, how can we keep our staff in our classrooms? How can we keep them coming back? The last couple of years have been extremely cumbersome for education, cumbersome for our teachers, and how do we develop programming to support them and keep them engaged and keep them extremely excited? Their well-being is important for them to be, you know, top of their game in front of students. Strategic initiative two is provide all students, all staff, including athletics, athletic coaches, professional development, training, and diversity, equity, and inclusion practices, inclusion, inclusive practices. Strategic initiative three, update the current bullying prevention plan. Keep in mind that there is a bullying prevention plan, but it needs to be updated for relevancy and currency. So that's one thing that will happen in the near future. And again, we have all of these initiatives on a timeline of when they will actually begin and hopefully become complete. Strategic initiative four, for spoke three, establish procedures to report incidents of bias. Okay? That is one thing that the committee felt that was an emerging issue and awareness under this spoke. Strategic initiative five, complete an equity audit, including auditing current curriculum content. And that's something that we do now in education, is we do audits for equity. And that is something that takes time. I mean, all our documents have to be reviewed, curriculum matter has to be reviewed, textbooks are reviewed, and that does take some time to do. The next spoke is capital and finance, and that's relative to allocating funding to provide effective, safe, and modern facilities and adequate resources to enhance the student experience. And the strategic initiatives around that is, is one, which is, again, I think this, this came up across the board. We did a, an exercise to actually see which initiatives rose to the top. And the foster school funding was, was at the top. And, and that was consistent across the board. So the number one strategic initiative is to support the implementation of the foster school building project with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. So that's, that's a big, big one. Strategic initiative two is identify a benchmark for appropriate pre-pupil expenditure. And that is something that I know the school department has discussed for quite some time, is what is the appropriate funding structure that should be in place to actually support the education structure that Hingham desires for its students? And that's something that I think will be worked on for, for the years ahead. But a lot of support and communication around what the adequate education model looks like in Hingham needs to take place. And that's part of our communication of the district. Strategic initiative three is develop a technology plan to address technology, infrastructure, vision, and needs. I think during COVID, we've all realized that technology in school districts were really pushed to its limits, from, all the way from infrastructure to end-user devices. What does that look like for the next three years? And I think Dr. Adams has, has already thought about a process to begin this work. But the district, I imagine, in the next year, year and a half, will probably be bringing a technology plan to the school committee table for its approval that will actually lay out the benchmarks necessary to achieve what a technology plan should do to help the district succeed in this area. Strategic initiative four, address various needs related to facilities and space. And that's a constant, right? One of the things that I hear from our parents is, you know, is, you know, this building needs some, some work, we need some groundwork, we need some facility upgrades. We've, we've talked a lot about the high school and the health and wellness complex that, there's motivation to have that built. But how do we address the needs across the district? The next bullet under this is to complete a district-wide space need study to address space issues to meet needs of students, programming relative to traces, special education, and electives. The traces program is an off-campus program that supports the trades. And that is in a rented facility off-campus. It's actually in Weymouth, and it's a program that we run. And we actually transport students to that program. And there's a strong desire to actually bring that program in, back into the district. They're all the students of the district, we just transport them out. The next one is to develop a five-year capital budget plan. I know John has done yeoman's work over the years trying to put all of our capital needs on the radar for the school district and for the town. There's, there's, you know, direction that, how can we do that for a five-year period of time? I know John probably has, excuse me, five years of information in his head tonight of what he'd like to see capital-wise in the district. But there's a desire to have that, that, that done moving forward. Strategic initiative five is to investigate alternative program options to meet the needs of all students. And this is relative to vocational education. We heard this from parents and we heard it from students about opportunities for students to become involved in regional vocational programming. Right now, in order to be accepted into a regional program, you have to go on a waiting list. We are not, Hingham is not associated with any regional vocational schools. We are not a partner. And in order to become a partner, it's a very arduous process. I've talked to the director of South Shore Vocational, and it is a, at the best, a two- to three-year process to even get admitted, if you can jump through the hoops to get admitted. So that's one of the strategic initiatives under this area. Strategic, strategic initiative six is develop and implement a plan to fully fund a full-day kindergarten program. Right now, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, there are a handful of school districts that do not offer free full-day kindergarten. Hingham is one of the school districts that requires parents to pay students to be part of that. We do offer some assistance for students that are, families that are economically challenged, but for the most part, they pay tuition to be part of a full-day case. So there is a desire to look at a model, a plan, to actually help to fully fund that program. Sure, go ahead.
Through YouTube that they're asking for the document, and we can make this available online later tonight for them to look at.
It will be. And actually, we can actually share both of these documents.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. The next one is, the last one, which is spoke five, it's relative to human resources and leadership. The strategic objective is recruit, develop, and empower diverse staff to lead courageously in teaching and learning. And the initiatives for this spoke are retain and recruit and retain a diverse workforce. Strategic initiative two is design a mentoring program to support leaders and establish an internal leadership program for aspiring leaders. Now, keep in mind, we do have a mentoring program for teachers, but we're looking at supporting leaders. I think you all see that we have three new principals in the district. We have a new business administrator. We have a new assistant superintendent. We have a new superintendent. And I think the goal here is to actually design a program to, to keep them energized, to mentor, and also to build a structure to recruit from within. But we train them. We, we want to get them some level of experience doing that for aspiring leaders. The next initiative, number three, is explore ways to provide collaborative prep time for staff to support educators with common planning time and gray-level co-curricular opportunities. I think this has been a desire for our teaching staff in Hingham for quite some time. There is great benefit to having collaborative time for teachers to prep so that there's a level of understanding and consistency of lessons and planning from classroom to classroom, especially when you talk at the high school level where we have multiple sections of different courses. We want to ensure that there's a level of, of consistency of curriculum and how, not necessarily how they teach, but the resources that we're using. Elementary is another good example. If you have three fourth grades, three fifth grades, you want to ensure that we're teaching not, not, we're not on the same page, but we're actually teaching the same curriculum, the same content. And that comes in with a lot of orchestration and planning for teachers. And that's something that takes a great deal of time, and that's what the teachers are, are really looking at how that can happen. Strategic initiative four is expand recruitment opportunities through revised, updated job description responsibility for administrators, establishing college relationships for job fairs, excuse me, establish relationship with colleges, to actually work with colleges that have teacher prep programs and actually bring some of those teachers to start doing their prep work in district. Job fairs and new student teachers, and that's part of that college relationship. Creating a structure for online electronic application process. We do have an electronic application process, but again, it's one of those things that we need to enhance that. There is an electronic process, but I think it can be enhanced. Develop a standard, standardized hiring process for open positions. Again, that's part of HR. And again, we have a new, a relatively new human resources director, and I think some of these initiatives will be part of that, of that department's work in the future. As we get to the next page, I, I want to highlight the participants that were part of this. You know, Dr. Adams, she's here tonight, and I'm, I'm grateful that she took the time to be part of the strategic planning team. I, I believe that Margaret made pretty much every single meeting. I think the last one she was not able to make because she was running a hiring committee next door. Dr. LaBillaud was part of this, Dr. Venice, Ms. Nie, Liza O'Reilly, she's actually here tonight. Thank you, Liza, for coming. Anes Parenti, school committee member, Rick Swanson, high school principal, Greg Lamoth, Melissa Roberts, excuse me, Melissa Smith, assistant principal, Katie Roberts, department director. We had Danielle Wetmore, she was part of the special education administration team, department guidance. We had Joanne Bellis, excuse me, department coordinator. We had Joanne Bellis, Nancy Busey, grade one teacher, Christine O'Connor, Soul Studies teacher. We had Melissa Goldman, specialist teacher. June Gustafson, she's the Hingham Education Association president. We had Ann Matthews, a parent. We had Allison Anderson, back when she was just a parent. Doug, Douglas Beck, he's a, a parent, former parent and community member at large. We had Ruby Fernandez, and we had Max Moyardis as a student. So that was a team that actually put this together. And one of the things that we added to the strategic plan that you, you didn't see in the last strategic plan is a page that identifies key terms within the strategic plan, because there are a number of terms within that plan that can be somewhat cumbersome to really articulate or even explain. So we actually put some key terms in there. A lot of education, educational jargon that, that we use in education. This last page will kind of break some of that down. And then the last part of, of the plan that I want to share everyone, with everyone, is the, how the plan comes alive. So this plan is initially approved by the school committee. And once it's approved by school committee, then it becomes part of the leadership operation in the sense that the superintendent and the leadership will develop their goals on how they operate in, in the conditions that they work in, in the capacity of, of our schools. And they'll use the strategic, the strategic plan to actually do that. So they'll break the strategic plan down, they'll, they'll pull things out of the plan that really fit with their departments around the timing of, of when they fit, and they'll actually build them into their goals. This will then be shared, the strategic plan will be shared with school councils, will be shared with the entire community. But school councils actually help the principal to develop the school improvement plan by school. So the, the strategic plan will then be broken down by the school councils. They'll see what's relevant, how they can build those goals into their school improvement plans for the year to come, and that will be part of that process. School improvement plans actually are, are brought to the school committee and it's heard by the, and heard by the school committee. And that's another way of actually ensuring that there's consistency on implementation, that we're keeping in, in touch with the strategic plan. So the plan just doesn't sit on a shelf and it's, it's a document, it's, it's, we want it to be a live, working document. And the last piece of the strategic plan, you know, development and implementation is really, how does this translate to the classroom? And one of the things that we work on with teachers on a yearly basis is establishing goals. So how do our principals, coordinators, directors, when they sit down and develop goals at the teacher level, how do they take elements of the strategic plan, the school improvement plan, the goals that are embedded within other areas of the school and actually built into individual goals for staff? So it becomes a cyclical process, and that's a constant review on how we can all be working on the same goals on a yearly basis. One of the things that I, I want to add is it's really important to keep in mind that we had over sixty initiatives that were brought to the table. We actually, as a team, ranked them. So everyone got a ranking opportunity, and these initiatives were ranked so that we could actually see what bubbled to the top and what became the, the highest priority in the district. The strategic initiatives that I reviewed tonight, there are twenty-five. Those twenty-five are what's moving forward. Keep in mind that the other initiatives that did not appear on, on the list tonight will always be on the radar of the district and will actually be reintegrated most likely in year three, when this plan gets reviewed. So on year three, this plan will then be reviewed and, and then updated. But keep in mind, the way the process works for a strategic plan, and I know Superintendent Adams is going to probably put this on our, on our calendar for, for May and, or April or early June, depending on the school committee and what their desire is. But typically, a school, a school superintendent will report to the school committee the progress that they have made as a district on the strategic plan. And at that point, it'll be a report of exactly what initiatives have been started, what have, what have been complete, what are in process, and what, what has changed in the district to actually reflect that with evidence. So that will happen on a yearly basis. One of the things that I also want to remind everyone is, on the strategic plan, there is a timeline. But keep in mind, every year, when that strategic plan is brought to the school committee, the superintendent may recommend a change of moving a strategic initiative up or moving it back based on all the development of key components that are necessary for an initiative to actually be successful. So a strategic plan that we're presenting tonight has three years in, in, in it, there are three specific years. It'll take us to 2025. But keep in mind, there are five key spokes that are strategic objectives that are grounded by strategic initiatives. What the district will be working on tirelessly for the next three years, along with everything else that it takes to run a district, of twenty-five different strategic initiatives that were presented tonight. I will tell you that our group was extremely involved, and I'm very, very proud of the work that they were able to do. And I will tell you, it's great to be in a strategic initiative, planning initiative like we were part of from a superintendent's position, because I was able to participate and not lead. And that is one thing that I found very helpful, and it was nice to be part of that process. So at that point, at this point, I'd like to open up to questions and any clarifying points that people would like to, to ask. And I know some of the members of the strategic planning team are here tonight. I don't know if I put them on the spot, but most of them that are here don't really shy away from microphones. So if they would like to, to add any, any observations, components to it, I would, I would, through the chair, welcome that.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mastis, and to the entire who's who of Hingham Public Schools who participated in the strategic plan process. This is an excellent roadmap for the next three years. I think the timing could not be better coming out of COVID with our new superintendent starting, new business director, all the leadership changes. My fervent wish is that we will be able to follow this roadmap, and there will be no detours along the way for something, but knock wood, if it happens, we will hang through it together. I actually love this header, Hingham Together.
Yeah, please do it. I have it on my notes to include it, and I just wanted to highlight that we did, you know, probably spent a couple hours on this, is trying to come up with a tagline, you know, like, you know, how do we title this? And the strategic plan cover has a title, and the strategic plan, Strategic Plan 2022 to 2025, it's Hingham Together: Navigating Our Future. So that's really the title of the strategic plan, and that's the tagline of it, and I think it's, it really does signify a moment in time, right? Because we have all seen a division of our communities over the last couple of years, and it's how do we bring our community together educationally, and how do we set the future straight for our students? So that's kind of what we were thinking.
I like it. I think it's simple, but it's very poignant, to your point, right? Bring people together, because after all we've been through over the last couple of years, right? We know that it's tried but true statement, right? Stronger together, right? So, and I think if we can move forward collaboratively, I think we'll be, continue to be in good stead. So I'll ask the committee members first if they have any questions for Dr. Mastis or anyone else on the strategic planning committee. Allison, you want to go first?
Thank you for presenting to us, Dr. Mastis. One of the themes that was prevalent throughout the discussion was communication, and you mentioned that we'll have a report on a yearly basis on the initiatives and where they stand. But I know one of the things we talked about was a dashboard for the public, so they could see all the initiatives, what was happening on a certain timeline and receive updates. Can you talk a little bit more about how that would be presented, not only to the school committee, but to the public?
You know, one of the things that, as you all know, we have a new communications staff member in the district, and I think one of the exciting pieces is she's extremely excited to be able to communicate in different ways. And I think when we take a look at the strategic plan and all the benchmarks, I think it would be really important for the district to communicate what those benchmarks mean by year, right? Because every spoke has benchmarks, and they have a year next to it. So we probably want to break those out first, and that dashboard will actually look at initiatives by year and how do we communicate that? And one of the things that might help Heather to really communicate that to the community is almost put a scale from zero to five of zero being not complete, five being complete, and where do we stand in that realm of completion? And also a caveat that some of these are cyclical, and they might never be complete, right? So maybe some graphics that will actually explain that, and I think that would be the exciting piece to sit down, and maybe even some of the, you know, school committee members that are interested might want to sit down with Margaret and with Heather and kind of just see what that looks like so that we can better inform the community on how are we doing around strategic planning initiatives to keep us true in a sense, right? Because we want to keep that constant gauge of where we're going. You know, it's really difficult from our superintendent's perspective to go all year long and not really have an opportunity to give an update on how the strategic plan is going, because there's so many things that fill up the agenda. In my former district, I would give little updates in my superintendent's report, and that may be something that Superintendent Adams may want to consider in the future is, you know, when something, benchmark opportunity has been completed on the strategic plan, how do we communicate that? And how does that get shared with the community? But I think the dashboard concept, we realized that was so vital, especially during COVID, to our constituents in the community that really wanted to see how we were doing, really with just COVID numbers. And that was like, I bet you our website, the Hingham website, probably not to get, was extremely popular, and not, under normal conditions, we probably don't see that. But when there's information that people want to see, how do we present it? But I think that would be a definite goal on communication for the district. You're welcome.
Yeah, this is going on with communication with the district. This is just one of those transparency questions. I don't know if someone can explain how under spoke three, strategic initiative three on update the bullying policy? If we want to talk, I don't know if either Jen or Gary or someone wants to take this and explain how that's different. People who are paying attention might notice we updated the bullying policy last week, which is not what the strategic plan is talking about. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, so one of the things that we need to inform the community on, and this is one thing, an observation that I learned throughout the strategic planning process is there's a lot of misunderstanding in the community that we may or may not do certain things. We have a lot of things that people think we don't have. We have a lot of things in play that aren't communicated well. So I think one of the things that we have to do is do a good job doing that. I think Ally's question about the strategic plan and benchmarking and how do we explain that is important. But when you take a look at the bullying prevention plan, that is a school operational piece on how schools respond and deal with bullying in schools. Now, Hingham needs to update that. That's different than the policy. This is procedure in the schools, and that's one of the things that the school committee has been very committed to, is updating their policy manual, which has been done. And I know Jen is tirelessly super working on it every time we make a revision. But how do the procedures that our administration and staff rely on, are those procedures aligned with policy, and are they aligned with recommended and good practice for Hingham? So that process is crucial, because our principals have to interpret that and act. So that's one of the things that we're really looking forward to doing, or the school department is really looking forward to doing. We have completed a crosswalk. Keep in mind, we had a policy handbook for the district. We had procedures that aligned with it. The procedures are sometimes more complex than the policy, because it's step by step by step. Could be two, three pages of a procedure for, you know, a five-line policy. So that process or that project is in process. The crosswalk has taken place, so we can look at what's still relevant from the old procedure book to the new one relative to new policy. A lot of work needs to get done on that, and that's why it bubbled to the top on the strategic plan.
Should I just keep going?
Yeah.
And for spoke four, strategic issue number five, you described that as talking about, really about the vocational program. Could we, especially as we're looking at sort of the trauma of COVID and all of that, could we, is it written to be specifically about vocational, or could we think about a behavioral or therapeutic program or?
Okay, I think it's really overarching to identify programming that really supports the needs of the school district, of other students. Yeah, and I think it's big picture, you know, because I think vocational was the easy relational program, because you can automatically see that some of our students just don't have those opportunities. That's with vocational. Now let's break it apart and look at other programs. So I think that's more overarching, global district opposed to just one program. You're welcome.
And my last question is for Michelle, so I'll give you a break. Process-wise, do we, does the school committee have to take a vote to approve this? Do we do that after a few, just wondering what the process is from this point?
We will have to take a vote to approve the strategic plan. Just for, so folks know, we received, this is our first hearing of the strategic plan, and we received it today for the first time. So we'll have some time to, I think, absorb it, ask questions, I think, probably talk to Dr. Adams to just see if she has any last minute fine tuning to make to it, anything she wants to adjust, and then vote in it. So I would guess, maybe not at our next meeting, but maybe two meetings from now, probably our August, we'll talk about our schedule later, but I think we'll have one meeting in July, and then maybe that first meeting in August, I think would be the right timing. Matt.
So I have a couple of quick questions. So process-wise for the creation of the strategic plan, I feel like midway through the year, we said it might have been like slightly truncated. Did we follow a normal process, or is there ever a time when we would get increased input from other stakeholders besides the subcommittee and the, or whatever we call them, and the survey?
A valid question. When you take a look at strategic plan process, the timeline, the amount of meetings that we had, the opportunities that were sent out, they resemble pretty much, you know, six to seven plans that I'm familiar with, that I've actually worked on. So I think there are, there's a great alignment between what other school districts have done to get their plans in shape and what this looks like. I think one of the things that, you know, we were somewhat disappointed on the focus group participation, and we didn't get the numbers that we thought we would get, but one of the things that we realized is by looking at the data that we had and the very detailed parent responses on the survey, there was so much alignment between the data and what the parents were telling us, it really compounded with what the strategic listening sessions did for us. So I think that triangulation really brought a lot of validity to some of the concerns that people were bringing forward. So, you know, I've been part of some of these strategic planning initiatives that have a high return rate on surveys. I've been part of one that has had up to fifteen hundred respondents. I've been part of some that have three hundred. I've been part of some that when you go to a parent focus group, two people show, and others where you get twenty-five. It really, you know, it's tough to gauge how we could have done it better. But I think to your point, Matt, it's tough. I think people are spent when it comes to going to meetings and joining online opportunities, and we toyed with the fact of maybe doing some of the strategic planning meetings online, and we said, you know what, no, let's just, let's do it live. And maybe if we would have done some of the, some of the focus groups on Zoom, we might have gotten more people, but we decided to do it live.
Thank you. I am interested, it sounds like we'll get the list of initiatives that didn't make the cut. I was surprised we didn't see, and again, I read through this quickly this afternoon, like, I don't think the words learning loss applied in here, and this is just a three-year plan, I'm surprised, like, was that on the chopping block? And I know it's kind of embedded probably loosely in some of these sub-initiatives. I was also a little bit surprised that I didn't feel like, I mean, again, loosely special education got called on a little bit. Can you talk about, you know, either of those two, or, you know, what was on the chopping block, you know, top three initiatives that didn't make it?
I think I'll share the list with all of you sometime tomorrow, and you can see what they were, but keep in mind that a lot of what you're talking about, they're embedded in some of the major initiatives that we have in play, because special education was a key theme in our work, and that was equitable service for kids, right? So when we start looking at equitable, what's equity, not only in how we see each other, but about what kids are receiving in the classroom, right? So I think that theme is very strong within the strategic plan, and that is part of the work that we do in the district when we roll this out to administration and even look at curriculum and looking at resources. How do we ensure that all students, all students are realizing their potential and the structures support that? So that's kind of the lens of the strategic piece. It's not specifically identifying special education, it's not identifying specifically vocational education in certain areas, it's not identifying the arts in certain areas, it's not identifying specific programs, but it's an overarching theme of how do we represent our kids equitably with the resources and appropriate structures to support those students in their space in Hingham, right? And that's kind of what we really discussed. And Carrie might be able to add to that.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a little bit to that. You know, one thing that came out with the data is there's special education students in some cases are very siloed, and so it's, there's general education, there's special education, and we've kind of recognized the need to kind of break that down and make this to all of our students. So I'm just looking at spoke two, you know, developing earlier identification strategies. It doesn't say special education, it says at-risk students, but that includes that the universal design for learning is designed at all students, but would definitely benefit special ed students. And then, you know, explore and implement research-based innovative instructional practices, all of that, that applies to everybody, and so, but, I mean, special education came through in every single one of the spokes, including communication and all that, so.
And I think, to follow up on that, I think the work coming forward, when school improvement plans are brought to the table, that's when we have to look at some of the specific details on what schools are doing individually to help shape some of those issues, right? So I think the work of the district is to really ensure that everyone is looking at the strategic plan with the right lens and ensure that those initiatives are consistent across all levels. But I think your point is well taken, is how do we communicate how certain key phrases mean all programming, not just one, right?
Very helpful. Final question, and I usually don't, or I'm not trying to wordsmith, but I'm curious. In our last strategic plan, the spoke two, I think is most similar to goal one, student learning. Before, we had said, provide innovative, authentic, inclusive, comprehensive educational program, fosters and sustains student curiosity, inspires students to be passionate, purposeful global citizens. And here, we've cut it down, maybe that was the consultant, but to be culturally responsive teaching and learning. I just am curious, I don't really know what culturally responsive means. Again, I'm not trying to be, there were a lot of good words in the last one. Is that, does that sort of capture all of that, or is that, am I just not thinking about that correctly?
What I have to, I can't recall the conversation that it took to get to this spoke. Each one of these spokes was, it was like a debate, right? And we came to some level of consensus. I think culturally responsive was just having an overarching understanding that we have to be responsive to all backgrounds that come into our community, and I think that was the theme that, I might even add, one of our student participants was extremely adamant about is that we had that as an awareness point, and it led with that. So I think, I don't remember the discussion, I just know it was somewhat charged, and again, the consultant tried to steer us to a place of, you know, of comfort, and I think that's where we were. And I'm not sure if anyone on the committee would like to add to that, but.
Jen, thank you for your presentation tonight, and then thank all the participants in the strategic plan committee. My first question is about spoke four, under capital and finance, and then the initiative, which is number two, identify a benchmark for appropriate per pupil expenditure. And then I also have on this other slide, I have the outcome, address financial needs of district programs and personnel. And if you could just talk a little bit more about that and the difference of that versus when the business manager sets the budget every year?
Well, one of the things that we do is when you build a budget, you take a look at what the needs are. We, in Hingham, we build a needs-based budget, right? So what programs need, what our principals tell us they need, we really try to understand what they are at a high level, and, you know, John will wear them down, and we finally get to a point where we agree on a number, or a program, or a staff member, or supplies. So we really work hard at doing that. When we talk about identifying what a dollar looks like, a dollar amount, right? There are There are, and, and this phrase is used a lot in this community and around benchmark communities. Communities that are really compared to Hingham and we compare ourselves to them. You know, what do they spend on per pupil expenditures? What do they spend on supplies? What do they spend on curriculum development? What do they spend on facilities? So it's, it's breaking their budgets down to actually see where those dollars are going and how do we compare with that? So we can actually see where the voids are because we're compared to them all the time, not only on expenditure, but on performance. So we kind of have to put things into context. So I think the motivation here was to take a look at, you know, are we, is, is Hingham in a position to appropriately compete? That's a big compete with everyone else. And if, if we're expected to compete, are we funding our schools at a level that we believe is appropriate? Okay. And there might be some compromise there because we might have a program that is, that this other district may not have. Or we might have several other programs that this district have that they don't. So what is that adequate budget amount for Hingham? So that's what that work is about, is what's adequate, right? Because it's, it's, it's much greater than, than, you know, the superintendent, the business administrator and all the staff, you know, coming together and, and figuring out what our needs are because we're trying to fill the needs of what we see today. How do we actually look at innovative practices? And we did one, right? Last year, you funded social emotional tier supports for, for schools. You hired a number of tiered one supports. A lot of school districts don't have that. But you made a commitment. So I think it's really calibrating where the district really feels they need to be around budget and design around that number or not. So you figure out what your real need are, needs are based on what you really want to see happening in your district. Or you continue to build a needs-based budget. And Hingham has built a needs-based budget. The needs have changed. You saw that last year. I mean, you added a lot of positions last year, but it was for a need, specific need. I know there will be needs that come up within the strategic plan. And that's why it's important to have a benchmarking date so that the budget can build around those initiatives. For example, we talked about the curriculum adoption calendar, the cycle. Each year of that adoption, there's a dollar amount for every column every year. So that has to get built in, right? We do it now, but it needs to be long-term strategic, like for the next three years, four years, five years, six years. Of course, the economy changes, dollar amounts won't change. I mean, the dollar amounts will change, but we gotta, we gotta plan for that. And the last question was something else?
Nope, that, that answered it. And I just, just to let the chair know that I do have a list of questions here from the community once the committee is done with their questions.
Yes, I want to piggyback off of what Tim had brought up, the procedures, handbook and bullying procedures, getting into that. I know that the administration, the principals have been working on it. We're going to go through this strategic plan and approve it in a couple more meetings, but I don't want to lose any time. And I'm wondering if you have needs, like if we were to get any kind of strategic counselors or, or people that can help make sure that that happens this summer so that when we get back in September, the buildings and administrators have a full set of what to do with bullying procedures or the handbooks get completed so that they know how they're supposed to be operating.
You know, right now, I don't want to lose sight on the fact that we actually have procedures and, and, and practices in place for bullying. It's just what we're proposing through the strategic plan is to refresh that based on what's relevant and what's new and what is better, a better model to deal with some of the situations that we deal with. Your suggestion is one that's well taken because I think what you're highlighting is it's, it's one of the key tenants of operating a school is to have these, these procedures in place, especially this particular one. So I will definitely, and I know Dr. Adams is here, we will communicate about that and see what opportunities are available to get some support, to actually get some of these. Again, I think it's what comes first, what comes second, what comes third, a whole listing of things of how they're phased in. Again, I think this is one of the, one of the ones that, that, that can be done. Again, I don't think that our procedures, building-based process procedures are that far out of date. It's, and I don't know that it would be all that difficult to refresh. But we may get some administrative volunteers to help to do this, but on the other side, we, we gotta put it on the radar to make it happen.
Okay. And then the social emotional needs, address the post-COVID trauma. I know that we've got some counselors that have been added in the budget and, and I think John's going to give us an update on 23. So hopefully that's being addressed so that we can help the kids' needs there. But, you know, anything that we can do to get a jumpstart on that so that we can, again, be ready for September when they come back.
Yeah, I think it's important for the community to, to understand a little bit about what's behind your comment, Ness. You know, our kids, you know, you don't see it every day, you know? I don't think you see what they've been through during COVID. I think we, our adults have, have been somewhat tempered and, and we can get through things. Our, our students and our schools have really experienced a great deal of difficulty because they were so much, somewhat isolated for quite some period of time. And, you know, students are our current teenagers, current students, they thrive social interaction. They thrive being with their friends. They thrive being in groups. They thrive coming to school. And when that's shut out, you know, we're seeing the impact of that. And I think we're starting to, to, to look at how we can best support them. I know you and I have talked about some opportunities for kids because of some of the gaps that they have during this time. And I know that Matt has, has talked about this a little bit too, about the learning loss. And that is always on our mind, even though it may not be identified as a specific initiative to target this. But everything we do is trying to get kids to be, for lack of a better word, grade level and beyond, lack of a better phrase, right? We want our kids to be at grade level and beyond, but we want them to be socially emotional well. And that's something that we're, that's, this district is so committed to doing. And I think the strategic plan and the development of it really had that at the heart of its development. That's what I see. You know what I mean? And I think anyone that was on the committee could really feel the, the compassion and passion of the strategic planning group to develop a plan that would really impact kids at a high level. Kids, you know, adults are on the outside and they're the support, but the kids are at the core. And that's what I think, I don't want to speak for anyone on the team, but I think that was at their, that was the primary focus every day.
And one more.
Yep.
So finally, I'm looking at just the initiatives and the dates and looking at the two that jump out are technology and kindergarten. It states the date is 2022. The budget has been built for 22, 23. So it might be something that we could talk to John about. I know that there are some S R funds still available or Margaret when she comes on. But I just want to highlight that, just given the dates that were put into the strategic plan and where we are with our budget.
Yeah, you know, one thing that I don't, I don't, and I don't want to speak for Margaret, you know, but I will tell you, if, if some of these things can be implemented and executed earlier, they, they will be. You know, I think the, the benchmark is try to get it done next year in the 22, 23 school year. But if there's a way, and I know Ayesha's here and she's, she's probably back there, you know, smiling, laughing at me. But, you know, she, she's, she's gonna, you know, gonna have to fill that responsibility to give us an update on how we can actually fill some of these voids. And, and under John's guidance, I'm, I'm sure we'll be able to, to look at how we can make some of that work. But again, some of these may be sooner than later. And I, and I, Hingham, I'll tell you, John has been, there isn't anything that I have, I've, I've talked to John a lot over my time. And he's an ultimate problem solver and he's helped me just get some stuff done just by doing a good job explaining it. And he says, okay, let's do it. But I mean, that's, that's what we do, you know what I mean? Because we got a crisis, we got a problem and we try to fix it. And I, I think, don't, don't lose, don't, don't over perseverate so much, anyone on the timeline. I think they all can be adjusted and I think that's the beauty of a year from now when Margaret presents all of the benchmarks and checkmarks that got done, right? Because some might haven't, even, even before we even get this implemented.
Yes, and I think that the timing is important and I know, given the current economic conditions and where we are as a town from a budget perspective, but these things are important, particularly when, you know, we only have the kids for 13 years and two or three years goes by, that's, you know, you've missed a whole cohort of students if we can't sort of get some of this stuff get done. And I think to the point of the social emotional, I think it's important to look at that. When I talk to educators and building principals and the department heads about the students and what they're going through, you really do have to look at the whole child because if the child has some sort of arrested development and is sort of two years behind emotionally and maturity-wise, they're also two years behind in the mental capacity to do the work in that grade level. And so you can't just say, oh, just put more homework on them or do some more tests or more quizzes. It doesn't work. It has to be the whole child because the whole person is there learning at that moment. So I think those are important things to remember as well. Anything else from the committee members? Ally?
Yeah. And more of a process question. As we talk about the budgets and to Ness's point about 2022, 2023 and then beyond, I know we're talking about an override coming up and a lot of what we talked about with the strategic plan was that this would be our roadmap for the next few years and help us build some of those numbers into what we're looking at. How will that work process-wise in terms of adding in those estimates and starting to budget some of these items?
Question and, and John might want to contribute. You know, I'm a firm believer of being completely transparent about the needs of a district. I think everything that this district needs, whether it's in the strategic plan for the future or not, has to be articulated to the community. And I think there's a process to vet that. And I think the process in Hingham has, has been very true. And there's opportunities to be able to justify why some of these needs are important. Some of the things that we talked about tonight, you know, I think it would be easier to get budgets passed in education if school departments would communicate their needs at a better, at a higher level. And I don't think we do a good job doing that. And I think, you know, even to some of the stuff we talked about tonight, you know, I just talked about what our kids have gone through. We don't, we're not that honest because we don't want to know anybody, we don't want anyone to know the pain that we deal with. But on the other side, we gotta be honest. If we're going to ask for something, we gotta tell people. If, if we're going to build a budget and, you know, Ayesha, you know, is out there listening, you know, we, we, our principals are telling us that they need certain things. We need to, we need to put it on the radar. If it gets adjusted based on conversation at this table and through the different organizations or committees in, in the community, then it gets adjusted. But I, 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 you know, maybe Dr. Adams may have a different approach, you know, but I, I don't think so. I think when you have a need, you gotta put it out there. If it gets tempered over time, that's process. That's what I believe, anyway.
I agree with that. I mean, I think that is important and I think that's what we've been, particularly over the last several years, been trying to do, right? Is to, our role is to share with the community and our other town administrators and other boards that this is what the students need. Their role is to tell us, well, that is excellent information and this is how much we have that we can provide for those needs. And then it's our job to figure out, okay, what are the priorities? What do we, if this is the, if this is how much we can afford to use, utilize this year, what can we do as a committee to make sure that we're meeting as many of the needs as we can?
You know, I used to always look at, every budget season's a campaign. And you gotta answer the questions. And I, I think the, the longer you're, you're at it, the, the better you get at it. But, you know, and it's, it's a tough process because it happens every year, right? And you have to, to sell, sell, sell. But if you don't do a good job selling, it's going to be hard to, to get what you need. So I think that's the process, you know? And I think Hingham, the budgets the last couple of years have been extremely, extremely difficult and rare. And, you know, I'm not trying to add, you know, I'm not trying to make excuses for any, anyone in education. But running a school district in the last two years, it's almost undoable. And you have budget on top of that, right? So I think as the years go forward and the process gets more and more refined, identifying what the true need is, how do you plan for it in advance? I think a model will emerge that is good for the school department. And sometimes people may not like what it looks like because it, it has dollars at the end of the day. But again, if you do a good job articulating what the true need is, communities tend to support that.
The budget process will start, you know, you'll be, September, you'll be talking about the budget and you take out this document. This is the roadmap. This is where the district is going to go. And, you know, there's got to be a timeline set. There's got suggested timelines in here. And it's going to be up to the school committee to prioritize, okay, where, what are we going to tackle this year? And then we could figure out the cost. In this is a bunch of strategic initiatives and some of them may have action plans that are associated with them. Some may be low cost and, and can just be easily absorbed into the budget. And then others you'll have to provide for within the context of your budget. And, you know, that will go through the entire process, you know, of, of going through the advisory board. And, and during that, during the, the next year, there'll be a couple of budgets. There'll be one that's an override budget and there'll be one that's a, a non-override budget. But in any event, even the non-override budget is still going to have to provide for the basic needs of the district. So we'll, we'll continue to have those growing things, but then you want to lead, you want to move in this direction. So there has to be initiatives that the school committee will prioritize in a planning meeting that will happen September, October. And those numbers will be incorporated into the budget. And that's where the, that's where the sale of the budget for the fiscal 24 year will go forward. You know, and, and then you, you do, you have some level of grant money. So you have some tools that, that, you know, between the committee and Dr. Adams and, and Ayesha and the team that's going to come in, we'll be able to work with and sort of prioritize and, and use that to the best ability for, you know, the kids and the students and to provide all of the context that's presented in these reports.
I mean, I think over the last couple of years, I mean, the, you know, the advisory committee has been supportive of a majority, vast majority of our budget asks the select board and of course town meeting who has, I think unanimously the last, last two years approved the budget request as requested, particularly two years ago, right? When we added the 32 positions, I mean, that was probably an unheard of, historically unheard of amount of money for the schools to be provided. And I mean, that really showed the support that we were getting from the town side as well as the community out there. So I think we just need over the next couple of years to just keep building that, being transparent. I'm sort of smiling, John, because you said we're going to start in September. We might be starting in July with a meeting between the executive board of AdCom and this board as well as Dr. Adams and Ayesha. But yeah, yeah. So, so we're going to start that as early as possible.
And say, okay, what about primary focus, you know, because it's, it's a three-year design.
Oh, yeah.
And you can't do everything all in year one.
No.
You have to prioritize and say, here's where we're going. And you try to put it out to the, to the years and I think that's doable.
Right.
And, and, you know, it's, it, there's details, but there's going, going to be action plans. And some of them will be low cost. Some of them will be absorbed into the regular organization.
Yes.
And, and that's with communication to the leadership team and to all the people that are leading, you know, leading the schools and moving forward. And you get that mindset incorporated and, and that's how things will happen.
Yeah. For our AdCom friends, so you know, I've circled the ones that are going to be free and I'm going to lead with those. Just so we can start off on the right foot.
One last point on the document. I, I imagine at some point another column will be added to the strategic plan operationally so that there's a dollar amount that we attach to that initiative, right? So if it's.
So if it's curriculum. So I think if it's almost, if, if you look at it operationally, you kind of want to know, do an estimate of where you, where you think that initiative is going to come in. Otherwise, it might just be, um, an, an integrated model that's integrated within the operation, the system. That really doesn't, it takes, it might be more professional development. It, it, it may not be an actual dollar initiative cost for tangible goods or services, right?
Right. Perfect. That was, that was going to be my, that was my, to be my last question. All right. So everybody on the committee? Jen? All right. Um, actually, if you don't mind, I might ask the folks here in the room if they want to, if anyone has a question from the public, come on up. Julie, you want to come up? Thank you.
Hi, Julie Straley, 231 Lovett Street, Chair of the Advisory Committee. Hope you can hear me okay. Um, I am asking about the, thank you first of all for everyone who worked on the strategic plan. I have a question about the staffing audit that happened this year at the same time, I think. And I'm wondering if that is completed and whether any of the results of the staffing audit informed anything in the strategic plan. Thanks.
I, I actually do that work. And I've, uh, completed that work as of, uh, last night. I'll be sharing that with the small group of the school committee tomorrow. But that, uh, what the staff audit really does is takes a look at class size. It takes a look at, uh, our populations in the district, takes a look at, um, our overall student population, our course offerings, to see if we're appropriately staffed based on what, um, an evidence-based model looks like. So I'll be sharing that information with the school committee tomorrow. And then, uh, they have to digest it and, and, you know, make some decisions based on how that all shapes out. But it's, um, it's a cumbersome process. But I, I, I know the staff of this district at a pretty high level. But it's taken a lot of effort to get to that point where I know what everyone does at a FTE or full-time equivalent MO, you know, from a 1.0, a .1 to a .8, .9 to a 1.0. So we have that, uh, done. It, it, um, one of the things that I always caution, I used to do this to, uh, with my 14 schools that I, um, worked with in the past. I would do it every year and I would caution everyone when they would look at the information. Every school has different structures based on the populations in that school, right? High schools have different programming features. And it's really difficult. And that's why you have to take a look at, you know, we talked earlier about, um, these districts that are compared to, to Hingham and how we compare ourselves to other districts. It's really difficult to do a comparison until you actually break apart what their schools offer and what they don't offer. So it's really difficult to do a staffing audit and staff it like other districts unless you know what they offer, right? Because that's what the voids are. So we're going to do a, I've done a pure audit of what we would recommend class sizes to be in the district and what they actually look like and what that staff number looks like. So one of the difficulties that you have, especially at the high school level, and I'll share this tomorrow with our, 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 our team, is we have a lot of singletons, right? You have APs that there's only one AP. And they can only be offered on one, on one period a day. That creates havoc in a schedule. So, you know, I think in the strategic plan, there's a benchmark to take a look at the high school schedule and take a look at the middle school schedule. I think anytime you look at that, you start looking at efficiencies and how you can make those singletons, uh, survive and thrive opposed to being an outlier in the schedule process. So I think the work that we do, looking at our staffing is really going to help, um, take a look at opportunities and, and how our schools operate. I don't think it's going to highlight that, um, less staff will, will, or, or more staff will be needed at this point unless, unless a program and, um, structure is added to support some of the things in the strategic plan. But I'll share that information with the school committee and they can then package it in a way that they think would be beneficial for, um, the different stakeholder groups in the community. You're welcome.
So, um, just so the rest of the committee knows, because we weren't going to have the staff audit results ready for this meeting, so it wasn't on the agenda. So myself and, because Dr. Maestis is leaving at the end of the week, uh, myself and Ness and Kerry are going to meet with Dr. Maestis tomorrow. We'll get the information. We'll probably digest it, talk with Margaret about it, and then put it on our July agenda to talk about for, um, you know, in public and to discuss how the results of that audit might have any impact on the strategic plan. So that's probably where I'm thinking the timing may be that we won't approve the strategic plan until Au- until August. If that makes sense? Okay. All right. Anybody else here in person? Eliza O'Reilly? Oh, that's what not being on the school committee looks like anymore? Noted.
Eliza O'Reilly, 19 Porters Cove Road. I apologize for my attire.
No, do not.
I came from my new job. So I just, I wanted to add, as a member of the Strategic Planning Committee, I want to just add some thoughts to Gary's fine presentation. I think he represented all of us very well. But one of the rewarding parts of being part of this process, for all my years on the school committee, it was the first time we had a session that had all the different stakeholders represented, not only from surveys and focus groups, but also in the room. And it was very rewarding. People shared some really heartfelt experiences that they had in the schools that were not easy to hear. And people also shared some joys and, and great parts of what we were about. And we were also very honest about our school district. And the consultants, all were very experienced people who brought a lot of points of view from a variety of other districts, their, their own experiences from working in their own districts and then the other communities that they consult with. And personally, I found that very helpful of helping us articulate what we were doing and also to define how Hingham is different from other communities. And also where are things that we lack, several programs, that they were kind of surprised that we didn't have, but we were able to articulate to them, no, we have to include that in the strategic plan. And so one of, I will bring up, um, is that when you're talking about being honest about what we need, it struck me that there are a number of things in this strategic plan that the school committee had put in our 2018 financial vision that we did share with the advisory committee, the select board, with the whole community. And that these things, we're still trying to advocate for them. And I really hope that this strategic plan becomes the way of saying, how do we finally get this done? And a yes, instead of hearing sharpen your pencils and no. And some of those things include curriculum review, the need for human resources and the focus on our employees, full-day kindergarten, the technology plan, and foster school and other facilities. We've been bringing these things up for years. So I really hope that this becomes the path forward. Also, I will note that in the town's master plan, which I hope gets finally published and released soon, that's my other, uh, soapbox these days. The education portion of the master plan and the recommendations from the master plan committee is to wholeheartedly support the strategic plan of the Hingham Public Schools. And so now we have this plan, which I hope you vote in soon, and that the whole town will get behind this because this is part of that other plan for the community. So, but then this plan also does incorporate the reaction to the post-pandemic issues that we face, as Gary mentioned. And from the, the input from the students, it also really emphasizes what Generation Z is experiencing and that, how they want their learning to be and experiencing diversity and equity and having everyone included and being challenged and, and exposed to a number of things. And so that is real, is rewarding for me to have experienced. Even though we've been advocating for a lot of these programs since 2018, this also incorporates today. And, and I know our staff also is recovering from all the experience of the last two years. Students are recovering, families are recovering. So I hope it gets supported and I hope that the broader community supports it. There are financial impacts of it. We're going to face some tough times, but we do need this to bring our schools forward. So it was a very rewarding experience. I hope you take, um, everything that it offers. And I look forward to seeing it implemented. But I had a great time doing it, so. So thank you and, uh, enjoy your meetings.
All right. Jen, do, oh, sorry, come on up. And then I promise we'll get to the folks on YouTube.
For my height, Barbie Lynch, 3 West Moreland Road. Thank you all for taking the time to put this all together. Um, I just had a couple of questions about it. Maybe you want to answer them after, but, um, was, when the survey was done, was the, uh, when, when the input for it was done, was it just the survey from the stakeholders that you got input on? That's like my first question. So focus group was just the people that you elected into?
No, no, no. The, the, we, we actually put out notices to families so that they could join a live, anyone, random, anyone who wanted to come. So we ran, um, six of those. We ran them throughout the community. So we took that information. The consultants did it. We sent out the invite, people showed up. We asked, it was a, a strengths, challenges and opportunities exercise. And we did that, um, across the town over, geez, it was six or seven opportunities.
I wish I had seen those because I had missed them. That's not something I saw. So my next question is, um, how do we get a chance? I guess you kind of said some of this, but going forward, I guess, because this is just a draft, if, how do we get a chance to have a say in some of this? And, and if it's something that as stakeholders, we want for our kids or don't since there are children going into the schools?
Difficult from my position, of, of course, I, I have, my, my hours are limited in the district. But I just want everyone to realize that this is not a plan of the school committee or a plan of the superintendent's office. This is a plan of this committee. And I think they took a lot of effort to develop this. So a modification to this would almost be changing the work of the committee. So, you know, um, you know, I'm not sure if I answered your question, but I think it'll be really difficult for a change structurally in the plan. I think some of the initiatives are very broad and overarching. So again, I, I, I don't know if I'm answering your question, but I think it would be really difficult to change the overarching spokes of this plan. Because there are, there's, it's, it's all, it's pretty tied together, you know?
Okay. And we got a lot of it and we really appreciated it. At this point, the, we have, we took all of the data from the community, from the staff, because there were staff opportunities for focus groups and, and for the survey too. And we, we kind of compiled that together to come up with the plan. So it's not really open for suggestion at this point from the community. That's too bad. Um, can?
So is it open for, like, let's say, I don't think it's going to happen, but we talked about it and said, well, we, you know, I don't know. We think a different spoke is more important. Um, that, that's probably true. Let's, let's take an initiative. The, the number one initiative that didn't get chosen, and there were obviously four of you that were, I mean, Allie, you were apparent on it, but that were on it. And we had a discussion, like, that's not on the table either? I, I'm not, I, or?
Come that we're not seeking community input anymore? I think what it is, if, I would say that if folks have thoughts about this and questions about it, I think they should reach out to, I would say, I guess, reach out to me, although this is the first time I'm seeing it as well. Because I think what, what I could say is, oh, I under, Barbie, I totally see what you're saying. I think that's covered underspoke number two, even though it doesn't specifically say learning loss, but it's covered in spoke number two. So I think that's how we can share information that way. So we're not, we're probably not changing the document much, but I think we could probably point people to how it's worded in here. Oh, that's in, that's going to be covered in spoke number two or that's in, you know, initiative number four.
Follow along with the, because we couldn't see anything.
Exactly.
We're just trying to listen and grasp what we are saying.
Yes. And we'll present, and this will be up on both of these. The, um, this, the strategic plan, as well as the slides, will be up on the website and?
In the strategic plan, it will clean up, but we'll put it out there.
Yeah. But folks can look at it and then give feedback, yeah.
So this is my, my last question, it kind of goes together. Um, considering there were a large number of kids that left the district in the last year, I think it was 400. Could be wrong on that. Were any of them surveyed to find out the reasons why they left the district? To be able to say, okay, well, maybe we have a problem with something that's happening that stakeholders aren't wanting for their kids? And maybe we need to address those moving forward?
Stakeholder that we have an email address to. So I don't know, we don't know the population. We want it to be anonymous so that people have open.
I know, it was just, it was, it was mentioned in a, in a, a school committee meeting at one point to maybe address that, to find out maybe some of the reasons why they had left. I'm just asking only because I would think if there's a, something that people are missing or looking for in the school, that that would be an important part of it.
Survey from people who had, their children had left the district and they explained why in there too. So we did get some of that feedback.
Okay. And then this is, this kind of goes along with it. Um, is there any place in the strategic plan that addresses, um, the academics, like the reading, the writing, the math, the history, the social studies, actual curriculum academics, not just? I, I think it's great that we're making it a little bit more open and inclusive to everybody, but for me, my kids are there to learn academics. And considering the backslide over the last few years, I didn't see or hear where there's like this push to get these kids back up to where they've backslided, especially with Dr. Labilla's, um, presentation they did a few months ago about, um, with the DIBLs testing and the kids of how the backslide that they've had. I just wasn't sure in that plan that, that was being addressed.
When you take a look at every spoke, I, I can't specifically highlight one of the initiatives, but, uh, academics, especially around curriculum revision and implementation is a huge initiative going forward in the school district. That, that was loud and clear. And, uh, I don't want to get, I don't want people to misconstrue. Kids come to school to learn. That's what they're here to do. And, um, all of the tenants and all of the aspects that are embedded in, in this strategic plan are around helping kids to be, to, to be at a point in their educational career that they're learning to the best of their abilities. The curriculum development, every resource that we're putting on the table is to actually try and enhance that. Okay? So that's the lens of when you build these things. So, um, I, I don't want you to, to, to misconstrue some of the language in here to not be specific academic on, you know, we're going to do X, Y, and Z to increase academic scores. We're going to implement curriculum that is rigorous, curriculum that has overarching scope for children, paying attention to their individual needs. And that's what good instruction is, is about. So I think that's what is embedded across every spoke in this strategic plan. But again, I think Michelle's absolutely right. You know, I think, um, if, if you're going to look at specifics around some of those pieces, they're embedded in these spokes because it's overarching for all programs and not specifically at the middle school to high school. It's pre-K to 12, and that's what we're really looking to do.
Okay. I look forward to looking at it. Thank you.
But I, it is, it does, I'm curious, the sort of behind the mission statement, because again, I'm just going back to the old one. You know, we did have the words, provide challenging and comprehensive educational programs, um, you know, in, to develop knowledge and skills necessary. So it, was it intentional to sort of move away from that language? It, we, we, by the way, also had things around inclusivity and safe and supportive environment. And we, it sort of, it's, it's not. And it's sort of, it's not there now. So I'm just curious, was that?
Innovative research-based practices.
I'm sorry, am I not looking at the right mission statement?
Well, I'm looking at the larger one, the mission core values and vision theory of action.
If I'm reading correctly, together with students, staff, families and community, we cultivate an equitable, inclusive, innovative learning environment that empowers all students to contribute to their local and global community. Is that not? Yeah, Jen's looking a couple pages after that, the theory of action.
Right.
Which is expanding upon the vision.
Yeah, so I'm just curious, I am curious like that.
All to dismiss anything that was done prior to the work that you see in front of you. This mission statement was developed collectively with themes and threads that were presented by the 21 people in the room. Pure and simple. It was not, it wasn't, it wasn't to diminish or to change anything that was done before.
Yeah, I'm not, I guess I'm, as I've thought about, you know, school, that challenging and comprehensive educational program is obviously, in my mind, is very important. I'm not saying that the 21 people that were on it are not saying that, but, you know, it was there before, it's not there now. I guess was, I'm sorry, I'm looking at you, Michelle, but you weren't a part of it. Like, for the people that were on it, like, I imagine that was, there was discussion around taking that out to some degree and like, or maybe the discussion was, well, it's more appropriate in the theory of action than in the mission.
If I could speak to that, I don't think, I don't think there was any discussion about taking it out. I think the intent was, there are so many things that we need to do to this district, one of them being really heal and move ahead as well as academic piece. And if you look at the values, we kind of built it in instead of very clearly stating it being about academics, but personal excellence and innovative learning. So it was kind of rolled in, as Dr. Meister says, into every piece of it, but just different wording.
Yeah, I think with the process, we did look at the old mission statement and vision and core values, but really we looked at it, but then we took all the. Yeah, we took all the data. I mean, it wasn't just the 21 people in the room, it was all the feedback and data. We took all of that and built a new one rather, so it wasn't a discussion of taking it out, but it was more building a new one.
I know exactly what you're saying, Matt, and I, because that was sort of popped into my head too, but then as I sort of read down through the values, I sort of thought, okay, like, the mission, right, is to graduate good human beings. The way we're going to get there is to provide them with excellent, high-quality education and do, you know what I mean? So it sort of was like step by step, but I recognize what you're saying for sure. Carlos? And I really will get to those people on, sorry, folks at home.
Good evening, Carlos de Silva, 5 Torrecille Road.
I know.
Liza and I cannot get too far from here. I want to begin by first of all thanking John Ferris for many years of great service to the town of Hangum. I had the honor of serving with you, John, for six years. I can say that, you know, some of the priority that we established together collectively with the school committee, we accomplished many of them and we, those that are not accomplished are in process of being accomplished. One of them is the master plan for the schools. The other one is foster getting, you know, to the point that it is the windows that plummet the river and, you know, working hand in hand with facilities to actually do a lot of preventive maintenance. So I want to thank you on behalf of the community because that's who I am here representing today, the residents of Hangum, and for the great service. Enjoy your retirement. Dr. Meister, you came here a year ago with the plans of really working with us to help us hire a new superintendent. You did that very well, you know, really empowering us and helping us through the process. You had the goal of delivering this strategic planning. We appreciate, I personally can tell you that nothing is better in life than having a roadmap, you know, an objective. So for the next three years, this school committee, along with the new leadership, have, you know, something in front of them that they can work from. And as you, you know, it has been mentioned, this is just a roadmap and obviously you can enhance it to the, you know, the maximum that you can. I am in particular very appreciative to the fact that this is school committee under the leadership of NAS and others, and working together with the advisory, the board of selectmen, put together sustainability plan that, you know, if we really push that through, we will work collectively and perhaps deliver a better way of doing our budgets and delivering a more service for our students and community. I wanted to take advantage also and welcome the new leadership, Ayesha and Dr. Adams. Dr. Adams, you do have a lot of work in front of you. We are going to be here as a community to support you, but one thing that I have been talking about for the last six years is I would love to have put in place a mandatory diversity and inclusion training for all staff, that any new staff coming in should be going through while they're doing orientation, whether they're teachers or custodian, should be go through a diversity training and really learn the in and outs of dealing with individuals of diverse background. So I just want to say that I am very impressed, impressed with the strategic planning. I was not a member of the strategic planning, but I did participate as a stakeholder. And I want to thank you all for a job well done and I'm going to be here helping you actually implement some of this planning. Thank you.
So it was spoke number three, initiative number two, provide all staff, including athletic coaches, professional development, training in diversity, equity and inclusion. So I looked right at you because you have been asking for that for a very long time. All right, now to our friends at home. Jen, do you want to, thank you.
Very small print, so give me a second here. Okay, so the first question is, does curriculum review for equity include a review for more inclusive lens?
I would say yes, and I think that's part of the work that the district will entertain in the years to come. I would say absolutely, yes. Good question, actually.
And I believe you answered this one earlier, was when will procedures be officially updated?
Yeah, that's, that's in process and, you know, like I said before, I think our administrators, teachers, every, and this committee is dependent on good process and procedures actually guide that. So that work is ongoing and it's extremely daunting because there are so many policies and there are state regulations, national law components that actually tie in with it. So we just have to make sure that we're including all those pieces. So it's a work in progress. And I can't, you know, foresee the future on this, but I think that'll take a lot of work in the months to come.
And then the next one was, how were the focus groups created and publicized? And then to piggyback on that question, how many people were invited to the focus groups?
Focus group was, an invite was sent out to every single stakeholder that we have email addresses to in the district. And we published times and people had the opportunity to come. If it was parent groups, they can come to more than one opportunity or whatever one they can make. And we actually did one virtual, I believe.
And then they run our Facebook page too.
Yeah, and we did a publication on it. And it wasn't a selective group, it was just open. We want to hear from anybody, everybody.
Okay. The next question is tiered emotional needs support was mentioned in that we have already spent money on it. Can you give examples of what that looked like in action for school year 21, 22, for example, at the middle school?
Tiered intervention is as far as.
Tiered emotional needs support.
So we actually subscribe to a tiered model of support for students. And that tiered model really takes a look at when a child is exhibiting socially-emotional difficulty, we actually have the opportunity to have staff members work with those individuals. It ramps up based on how that child and that reaction and that involvement really works with students, but that's in place at the elementary school at a significant level, middle school at an emerging level, at the high school at an emerging level. So this is the very first year of it and I can tell you that as the years go forward, you'll see more and more involvement as the model gets more and more refined. Keep in mind, this is the very first year of that. Keep in mind also that we're, the district is hiring for next year counselors and those have been advertised and those would be hired for next school year. But those are specific for the kind of work that we're talking about. Socially-emotional work is primarily with school adjustment counselors. The counselors that we're bringing in are a great deal of academic support, okay?
And there's a few comments about people mentioning that they didn't see that communication of focus groups, but I don't see any more questions. Thank you.
Yep, I see a question from the audience. Come on up, please, and state your name and address.
Susan Wetzel, 239 High Street, Hangum. First of all, thank you for the policies and procedures that you have provided me with. And when you spoke tonight, I kind of began to understand the gap that I'm finding in trying to understand the policies. So you mentioned that there is, there are procedure manuals. My question is, are these procedure manuals at a grade level? Are they one for each of the four schools? And how do you get a copy of those?
I can tell you that they are overarching pre-K through 12 procedures. And it could be all the way from procurement to how do you procure something, all the way to how you deal with suspension. And those policies are clearly embedded in our, in our communication and documentation that we have, that we will post on the website. That work is in progress. When I came to the district, one of the deficiencies that I realized is having a published procedure document, that you won't find one online because it's not online.
I know, I've looked.
Yeah, and I will say in the future, the work that's happening now along with policy, like, the new policy work is all online. There'll be procedures that will follow that as well. So that's something that we've discovered was void. We started a crosswalk to actually try to remedy that and that work is ongoing.
I will just make a comment, is I was a registered nurse by training and so.
Thank you.
30 years in practice. And so the first thing I went to was what is the policy and procedure manual? And so when I began to evaluate some of the situations that had come to me as a grandparent, I began to say, well, what is the policy? Well, what is the procedure?
Absolutely.
And I can tell you, they're not in place here in what I would think would be an excellent format that is easily accessible. When I went to the website to look at the policy manual, I found out that it said that no part of that could be photocopied, that you were not allowed to copy that. And then I think, I don't remember, was it you that I spoke with? I don't remember, but anyway, I got a printed copy because it said you couldn't copy that. So I think it's critical and I raised three children in Hangum Public Schools and they are the portrait of K through 12 and they're good, responsible citizens. So I understand how important that is, but I would like to make sure that as a community and those of us that have resided in this community and supported this community have the ability to go and get those policies and procedures. And we don't, I, we'll probably have grandchildren in public school, but it's not such an arduous task. I mean, when I found out that we have 20, I think around 22,000 people here in Hangum, and if I understand you correctly, there were 400 respondents to the survey, 21 people on the committee, six focus groups, and from what I understand, many of the parents didn't know about that. I didn't know anything about a focus group. And yet the strategic plan, and I think if I understood you correctly, is kind of like there. I'm stunned. I've lived in the community 42 years. I'm stunned that during the time of COVID, that more effort wasn't put into getting a community-wide response to this. It sounds very important. Thank you to the committee that worked on it, but it's disappointing to me as a resident. So this is my comments.
Thank you. I don't know statistically what that number is, represents when, I don't know if the consulting firm felt that was a small number, representative sample, large, I don't know if you.
I can inquire with him.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. Okay, so that is it for the strategic plan presentation. Thank you again to everyone who worked so hard on it, to the community members who participated in it. I think 400 seems like a large number and I was not privy to the, to the, you know, to the comments that were all made. I'm sure there was a lengthy document of responses from folks. You know, I'm sorry if folks feel that that was not adequate or appropriate. I know in the past, as Liza had mentioned, sometimes the strategic plans have been developed by, just by the school committee at a workshop. So this was a, an opportunity for folks to weigh in and to provide feedback to us. And we did advertise it. I got several emails, my children who are alumni received emails about it. I harassed them to participate in the surveys. So again, if folks don't feel like it was inclusive enough, that is unfortunate. You know, we will strive to continue to do better and pull people in as much as we can over the years as we roll out the initiatives. But I do want to, I don't want to take away from the work that folks did and for all the folks who did fill out the surveys and who did participate in the focus group. So thank you to everyone and for all of the feedback. All right, so I'm going to, we'll end the discussion on the strategic plan presentation and we will move on to, which should be a much faster agenda item, is approval of minutes of the meeting held on June 6.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on June 6, 2022.
All right, is there any discussion? No, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? No, all right, those are approved, thank you. In the interest of saving time, because I recognize it's the longest day of the year and I don't want to make this the longest meeting of the year, I'm already, I'm already falling behind, Carrie, on your quick meetings. So rather than read the public comment, I will ask if anyone here has a comment to make under the public comment period, and if so, I will read the lengthy disclaimer. Don't see anybody in the room. Anyone online, Jen? Question that's not on, to address something not on the agenda? Well, all right, let me know if anybody.
Just comments, more comments about the focus groups and not people not receiving information?
Okay, noted, thank you. Okay, item number six is the superintendent's last report.
I just want to report that we are, I think you all noticed that our COVID numbers are down again, which is great. And we've had a really good close of the school year. A lot of really great things have happened to help close the school year, a lot of field trips going off, and I think a lot of effort goes to the administration and staff for helping to get this year successfully where it is. I just wanted to let everyone know that, as we said at the beginning of the meeting, this is my last meeting, my last week, and I want to thank everyone for their, you know, welcoming when I first got here and for, you know, people reaching out and thanking me for the time that I've been here. So it's been, it's been a quick but difficult journey while I've been here, but I want to thank you all for welcoming me. So best of luck moving forward and I'm glad that Margaret's here because I wish her nothing but the best and I'll be here as long as she needs me. And Ayesha, we look forward to your contributions in fixing all our budget issues.
Communications, any communications?
I had a lot of communication email from students at the high school and actually a couple at the middle school regarding civics projects that they're involved in.
Yes.
And, you know, like I mentioned last school committee meeting, I actually emailed a group at the high school, my very first one, and I said, hey, why don't you set up a time and I'll come over?
All right.
All right?
Yeah.
And then we couldn't come up with a time and then. And then like that afternoon, I had like six more. And then the next day was like seven more, and then the next day was like eight more. And like, I think I made a mistake by reaching out to these kids to go meet with them because I can't meet with one and not meet with all of them.
Oh, yes.
So that kind of didn't work. But there's been a lot of email coming through from students relative to projects that they're working on to advocate for change in different aspects of the community relative to the school. And they wanted to grab my ear as the interim superintendent. And I appreciate it. I appreciate their words and I appreciate their motivation. And I took it that most of the students that reflected, took it not as an assignment. They took it as a motivation in life, you know, like a mission. They were advocating for something they really believed in, and that's what you want.
Yes, no, absolutely. Speaking of student communications, I will follow up on that. We also have received a number in, including a very hefty stack of written communications that. You know some of those names? I think they're mostly from, but they look like high schools students. I recognize some of the names as well. So thank you to all the students who have reached out. I apologize, we just got them today. So we will figure out a way and how we'll respond. Either hand, I want to, I mean, they hand wrote to, they hand wrote to us, I'm going to hand write back. It might take me a little while, though. And we have received a number of emails as well from students. And I agree with Dr. Maestis, the suggestions are really well thought out. They are very well written, and they have some really great ideas. Some of them are purview or tangentially are purview. So Dr. Adams, we're putting together a list and we'll share that with you when you arrive. But no, there are some really great suggestions that they're running from scheduling to start times to school bus loops to traffic issues. More money for technology, it's, it runs the gamut. But, but we will, we do take them seriously. And it really is, it's great to hear directly from the students because we really get a feel for what's important to the kids actually in the buildings. Student communications, I'm just also going to note that we have a new student representative to the school committee. Nathan Tesler is our new student, yes, student advisory committee representative to the school committee. He couldn't be here tonight, but we do also have a new student advisory committee. And the members are Anthony Cicerone, Alex Doggett, Nathan Tesler, and Trevor Buckridge. So I had the opportunity to meet with them very briefly over Zoom the other day. Very highly motivated group, and they're excited to work with all of us. So we're going to put together a schedule of meetings for the fall to meet with them as a group. Anyone else have communications?
Just to add to that, I assume the incoming ninth grade will get an opportunity to appoint somebody as well.
Yes, and I believe, yes, so I believe there's a five-member committee and the, that's the one grade that's missing. Yes. Yep.
I just want to say, I believe the members of the special ed slash curriculum subcommittee received communication from the CPAC board, but I'm going to talk about that under subcommittee reports.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, so that's it for communication. We'll move on to unfinished business, number eight point one, to hear an update on the fiscal year twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-three budgets and act as appropriate if needed.
Thank you. So both of the budgets are in very good condition. The FY twenty-two budget is coming to a close next week. I'll take the final peek at it, but it's, it's really in good shape right now. You know, much of the surplus has been, you know, spent on capital items and other productive uses of the money. You know, I would anticipate it's going to be under a hundred thousand dollars, probably lower than fifty thousand dollars of a return at this point. But the big key is like next week is the final payroll. So I really have to see what that's going to look like before I can come to, you know, a decent closing number. FY twenty-three is also coming along very well as well. You know, we've had a couple of positions that, you know, the people have resigned and they're not going to be replaced. You know, so some of the, some of the attrition is happening, and that's because of the other resources that we have in place. And we're sort of catching up to the lower enrollment growth. So there's actually been about three positions, so that budget is, you know, within striking range now. I mean, the last time I took a peek at it, it's about thirty-six thousand dollars. But keep in mind, thirty-six thousand dollars, when you're talking about sixty-two million, it's, it's pretty much balanced. So I think that the new administration will go into FY twenty-three with a good budget, an excellent budget, plenty of resources in order to do their work. The grants are still available. We have the two hundred and nine thousand for the S R three grant. And we have some, excuse me, S R two, and we have some seven hundred thousand dollars in S R three. So that money, you know, will be available for the committee's use and the administration's use. S R three is good until twenty-four, and the S R two will have to be spent by the end of the year twenty-three. So I think in, on a budgetary and financial front, we're in very, very good shape for both years. There's not going to be a significant chunk of money returned to the town, and twenty-three is adequately funded. We have accelerated a couple purchases as well, you know, in terms of textbooks and the like. So, you know, for all practical purposes, twenty-three is already balanced.
Any questions?
So we had talked about doing a transfer to the special ed reserve fund. Or do we want to try to do that with whatever is left over at the end of the year, given that amount was needed this year for the first time, and we had some people on the watch list?
The last time you put a vote out to allow me up to a hundred thousand dollars to transfer into that reserve. So that vote's already been taken, so.
Sorry.
Yep, so, so, yeah, no, that was taken the last time, so I'll keep that in mind. I'm not sure I will have funds to, to use it. But, you know, the, Suzanne has given me an update as well. The last time, there was a new family coming in. It may not, the impact may not be as big as she initially thought. So, you know, without saying more about that, we'll, we'll keep that under advisement. And we do have four hundred thousand dollars in the account already, so.
Thanks.
Thank you. I'm just double checking the minutes because I didn't remember, I didn't remember that.
Jen's doing it.
I was like, I don't remember that vote either.
Yeah, but.
But, oh, no, there it is, John Ferris requested authority to allocate potential excess funds. Oh, but we said we will take it up at this meeting.
Yeah, I think we talked about.
So we didn't vote on it. So the minutes say John Ferris requested authority to allocate, and the school committee will take this up at the six twenty-one meeting because the agenda didn't say and act as appropriate. We didn't include action on the last, and so.
Okay, in that case, I would like to vote to allow me up to a hundred thousand dollars to transfer into the special ed reserve.
Okay.
I'm happy to make that motion. All right.
Yeah, no, no, go right ahead.
Like what would the, why would you just, let's say you have fifty thousand, you think you're going to have fifty thousand. Let's say you think you're going to have seventy-five thousand. Like what would drive you to say, I'm going to give fifty thousand to special ed? Or I'm going to give fifty thousand back to the town? What's, what's the calculus there?
I think the calculus is trying to manage a reasonable amount of money back to the town that's acceptable to the universe, you know, in this committee. So, you know, I, I won't go down to a zero.
Right.
You know, there'll be some, some money residual transferred back to the town.
One other piece that I think is really important, Matt, that, that we run into quite often is unusual expenses that, that come in to the community based on a new placement that was not on the radar. Maybe a family moved in with a child who has services that we need to provide for, and it wasn't initially in the budget. And if we have a reserve, we actually will go to that reserve account to actually cover it. So I think that is a safe gap, stopgap measure that we need. So it's nice to actually replenish it if we pull from it.
Yeah, and I guess that's where I was going, is like, obviously we want to be responsible to the town and give money back. But what is responsible? Is it twenty thousand bucks? Is it ten thousand? Is it fifty thousand?
Yeah, somewhere in that range, yep.
Yeah.
Dominous amount of funding that we want to put back. Because, you know, we, we can certainly use the funding. And also, though, we want to sort of reflect that we budgeted appropriately. And, oh, look, we got this much money, and that's what we ended up needing.
And we do have use for it.
Yes.
We may not need it, but I like to have the ability to, to use some of it. We already have allocated about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, Matt, of that reserve fund for tuition for next year for twenty-four of the four hundred thousand. And we had, I think, the last check was some four hundred thousand on a watch list. So, you know, so we want to make sure that we have, you know, adequate funding. And daily I get updates, you know, I'll be talking to Suzanne again too before I close out the budget. So, you know, I'll get a good feeling for, you know, where we should land the ship.
All right, so we have a motion. Does somebody want a second?
I actually didn't make the motion yet.
Oh, you didn't? Oh, sorry, I thought you did. Oh, you said you would make the motion.
Yes, I would. I'll make a motion to transfer up to a hundred thousand dollars to the special education reserve fund to be used for unanticipated, unbudgeted, and/or extraordinary costs associated with out of district, out of district tuitions and/or transportation.
You will second, all right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? All right, that is unanimous. Thank you, John. All right, thank you. All right, new business, nine point one, to discuss and confirm school committee summer meeting schedule. So we'd had on the calendar to have a meeting July eleventh, July twenty-fifth. But our July eleventh meeting, we are not having, Dr. Adams, I just want to confirm because you are not available on the eleventh, correct? Is that the, that's the superintendent's conference? Okay, so we are going to cancel the July eleventh meeting. And then July twenty-fifth, we were scheduled to have a meeting. And I was going to try to also have that be our mask, new member orientation and old existing member, sorry, existing member, refresh. I know, Ally, you are out of town, but I am checking with mask to see if you could participate remotely. If you're, are you, you could do that? Okay, so I will circle back. Hopefully that date will still work for everyone. So hold that July twenty-fifth if you can. And then in August, we are slated, and I'm sorry, I've got to flip through my calendar, for Monday the ninth? August, August eighth, and then August eighth, sorry, do you have the other date?
Yeah, the twenty-second.
August eighth and August twenty-second. I think, let's keep both of those dates if folks are good with that for right now. Just because with Dr. Adams coming in, Ayesha coming in, I think there's going to be, it's going to be a busier summer than usual ordinarily. We try to just do one in July and one in August. And again, we are. Exactly, yeah, exactly, I haven't done anything. I think we, I think we met every week that last summer. Yes, but we can also, I mean, and I do mean this sincerely, we are a seven-member board. If people cannot make a meeting, you know, that's why there's seven of us, right? We only need a quorum of four. And I, you know what, I actually am not sure, has, has the governor extended the remote option? Do we know yet? Anyone? Okay, I hadn't heard either. So let's, fingers crossed that that continues to be a post-pandemic option for, for us if we, if we need it. Okay, so we are, we will not have a July eleventh meeting, but July twenty-fifth, and then August eighth and the twenty-second. Great, thank you. Yes. I know, that's what I was also thinking. Dr. Adams and I are going to meet on July fifth, and so we will, she and I will maybe draft something to come up for a schedule. I would like to already thank Dr. Adams because she did already draft a rolling agenda. So Dr. Adams has already sort of plotted out that this meeting, we'll do this, this meeting, we'll do that. So that's a huge help for myself and Sherry too. So, so Dr. Adams, fair with you? We'll talk, talk on July fifth, and then we'll bring it to the July twenty-fifth meeting. Great, thank you. Okay, so new business nine point two, declaration of surplus and act as appropriate.
Thank you. I have a couple of items for you tonight. The first item has to do with some textbooks, foreign language textbooks that are old. And they're just sitting in a closet collecting dust. So Director Erica Pollard is actively to have them declared surplus so that we can dispose of them properly. They have no value, she called the publisher, they have no value, they're older editions. And in the packet, you have a list of, of the textbooks. There's, you know, several hundred of them that have just been stored up. So what we want to do is be able to clear those surplus, and then we'll dispose of them at the lowest cost possible to the taxpayers of Hangum.
So I'm going to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to declare the foreign language books as detailed in item nine point two a surplus and to authorize the Director of Business and Support Services to dispose of the books at the least cost to Hangum.
Second. All right, thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, good, thank you. And, and the second surplus item I have today is, is the outgoing Assistant Superintendent Dr. Labilawa's request to purchase his Macintosh computer, the laptop. And the, the Mac, the Macintosh MacBook, we're HP shop, so we really don't use Macintoshes. So, and Joe, Joey Andrews, our technology expert, he bought that computer back in February twenty-one, and it was at a price of twenty-two ninety-nine. So what he's done is actually over a five-year period, taken a depreciation of, you know, of one year, like four fifths of the computer, and set a value of that computer at one thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and twenty cents. So the, you know, in order to properly dispose of any equipment that the, the school committee has, it has to be declared surplus in order to do that. The, you know, if it was an HP, we may not be so keen on declaring an HP because we could resurface, reuse that. But the likelihood of a Macintosh being used, it could potentially sit on a shelf for years. So I don't think that it's, I think that it's probably a good, good, good decision to allow that computer to be declared surplus and to allow Dr. Labilawa to purchase it at a price of one thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and twenty cents. So the, what I'm requesting is to have that computer declared surplus so that it can in fact be sold to the outgoing Assistant Superintendent Dr. Labilawa.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to declare a surplus, the Apple, Apple Macintosh laptop MacBook Pro computer currently used by outgoing Assistant Superintendent, and to allow said MacBook to be purchased by James Labilwa at a price of one thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty cents.
Second. Any discussion?
Can you just add, and the funds received will be deposited into the general fund?
And the funds received will be deposited into the town's general fund.
Thank you.
You can second that as amended, all right, any discussion on the amended motion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, oh, number nine point four. And I, my understanding, unless there's someone here to speak to this matter, is. Oh, any retirements and? Oh, I'm so sorry, nine point three. Are there any retirements, new hires, or resignations?
Any lists?
Yes, there was none in the packet. Oh, there was?
There was.
Oh, I am so sorry. I don't know how I missed those.
I don't have them open, so.
There are four people, so.
Four people, yes, can somebody read that?
Okay, my glasses too as well.
My laptop's over there.
Kenneth, Kenneth Mrose Custodian, Jacob Little, chemistry teacher at the high school, and Shannon Rag, fifth grade teacher at Piaras.
Thank you. Thank you to Mr. Young for working, no, that's all right.
This was confusing, the separation to James Young Custodian and the hires.
Are, yes. I got that, I was going to say thank you to James for your service to the district. And then welcome to Kenneth, Jacob, and Shannon. Kenneth is already here as a custodian, but the other two chemistry teacher and the grade five teacher will be joining us August twenty-ninth. So thank you for joining the district. We will look forward to meeting you at new hire, new orientation. Thank you. All right, so nine point four was to discuss a request for the potential use of, potentially using the Hangum, a Hangum Public School field to host the July fourth fireworks. And a, I had gotten a call, and Dr. Maestis had gotten a call from the Lions Club who was looking for a potential place to host the fireworks. There was an issue with using the Harbor Island. But the, my understanding is they voted last night to postpone the July fourth fireworks, so they are not hosting them on July fourth. So we do not need to take any action on that item. All right, item number ten, subcommittee and project reports and warrants signed. I'll just go around the table. Matt, do you want to?
Yeah, I did attend East School, my first. Like I had, I did attend East School, my first school council meeting, and we reviewed the school, the school improvement plan for the year, and, you know, I think a lot of great progress was made against the plan. You know, not, there, there are, there are definitely things that remain, will remain on the list for going forward, but they obviously wanted to wait to see what the strategic plan output was, and then they'll map, or we will, I guess, map the, the new improvement plan against the strategic objectives. Great meeting.
Thank you. The Hingham Arts Alliance had an event, I guess a week ago now, on the Green at Derby Street, which had great feedback, lots of fun, face painting, drum circles, all kinds of good stuff, and they're also continuing their profiles on social media, so keep an eye out for them. They've been profiling not just students, but teachers and community members as well, so it's nice to see all the different faces. And then the Climate Action Planning Committee had a community engagement session last week. Unfortunately, due to open meeting laws, they couldn't have a quorum because they want to do some feedback sessions in small groups, so I didn't actually attend the meeting, but they do have it online if anyone wants to watch, and then they will have another meeting next week on the 29th at 7:00 PM.
The letter from CPAC, I talked about it, was in reference to the committee assignments from last week. We talked about combining the curriculum and the special ed subcommittee, and we did talk about that at the previous special ed subcommittee meeting, but then people who weren't at that meeting had expressed a lot of concerns and reasonable, well-spoken concerns about wanting to maintain the centrality of special education in Hingham, to want to build on the momentum that they had this year, to want, you know, all really good reasons. We, going into it, I've, in conversation, said that we really wanted Dr. Adams to be a part of the discussion about what to do with these committees, tabled it, so for right now, we are not going to, generally the subcommittees don't meet, some of the subcommittees don't meet over the summer, the special ed and curriculum ones hadn't met over the summer in the past. So I think it's fine to take the summer to pause this, take a breath, and think about how we want the committee structures with maybe some more feedback from the stakeholders, so we will go ahead and schedule a meeting for August, I'm thinking, because this needs to be priority one, is Dr. Adams comes into town, and we can have some breathing space with this, to be able to figure out what we're doing with the curriculum and special ed subcommittees, if we're combining them into one. Just to tell people that we're, we're taking a pause of that, even though that was approved last week, and we've been talking to Michelle about the whole process. So that's what's going on with the special ed slash curriculum subcommittee. We will be meeting in August to sort of define what the role of that committee is and if we want it to be one or two committees. And then the only other thing going on is I, finally, the Hingham Human Rights Commission is coming together. People have, the committee has been named, people are on, have been appointed to the committee. It's really exciting to see it come into existence. I think I was, given the trust of this committee, I was sort of, went around the application process because I was representing school committee on there. But yeah, they're going to meet next week, and that work will get started, and we're pretty excited for that to happen.
Yeah, the middle school council met for the last meeting of the year today, and we went over the school improvement plan as well. Their school council did this, I just joined as a liaison, and they, they've been working on it for a while, and they've done some great work. They have a draft ready to go with the understanding that we're going to look at it with the strategic plan, and it needs to be consistent and kind of flow from that, but that was really good. And then we talked about the community read for the middle school, which I just read, called Come Me In by Varsha Bajaj, and it was, it's a great book, and I definitely recommend it to anyone who might want to read it, too. They have a lot of activities planned, and I think the author is planning to come next year, so.
Um, I attended the SNAP board meeting, I believe it was last week, and they just, they discussed how successful their annual party was in the first week until June, and then I also just want to throw out there and remind people that one of their, they partake in the 50 Flags fundraiser, and I believe tomorrow at 6 o'clock is the deadline for people who want to participate in the 50 Flags rentals. That's it.
And I attended my first foster school council meeting. They were working on their, their last meeting as well, and talking about the school improvement plan, they're sending out a survey to the parents, so they talked through just some of the questions that were going to happen there. Also, now that Ayesha is here, I would like to get a finance, capital, and facilities subcommittee meeting scheduled, and there are warrants in your packet related to that. And finally, the Sustainable Budget Task Force continues to meet every other week, so we're doing that this summer, and just talking through what the summer plans are and action plans that, that we want to work on to make sure that we are moving ahead on, on some of the recommendations that came out of that plan in February.
Thank you. For myself, the high school had their final school council meeting last week. We went, talked a little bit about the handbook, particularly the dress code, updating that language, and we started preliminary work on the school improvement goals for the next school year. Dr. Adams had given some great suggestions for guiding those goals, so we took those into consideration, and I think those are going to come along very nicely. I did have a quick meeting with the new student advisory committee. Again, a great group of students, it was a quick 20-minute just sort of introduce, but we are going to attempt to put together a schedule. By statute, we should meet with them at least every other month of, during the school year, so we were going to try to do, you know, September, November, January, et cetera, so we'll put a date on the calendar for us all to meet with them. I think that's it for me for project reports. Do you have anything else? Anything else? All right, item 11 is any items not reasonably known 48 hours in advance of the meeting? Does anyone have anything? Nope, I don't either. All right, our next meeting is actually, we do have a meeting tomorrow night. We will convene in open session very quickly, and then we will adjourn to executive session to discuss collective bargaining strategies with several other boards, select board, advisory committee, and the personnel board, and we will not return to open session tomorrow night, so, but we, this group will be meeting. So before I take a motion to adjourn, I just want to thank you both again for all of your service to the district, your short tenure, but very impactful, and John, of course, your decade-plus and all the work you've done, and also to Dr. Labilawa, who couldn't be here tonight, but we thank him for everything he has done for us, and we wish him the best of luck in Brockton, they are lucky to have him. With that, I will take a bittersweet motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well, we are adjourned, thank you.